No matter what age your child is, you want the best for their future. What do they want to do after graduation? What career path do they want to take? These questions can be overwhelming. That's why you should ask them this question. What's your E? Seminole County Public Schools' ePathway program is designed for your student to choose their own path in life from as many options as we can offer. Whether they're looking to enlist, enroll, or be employed, we're excited to help you and your child make it happen. Want them to enroll in a college or university? We'll help you find the best school for them to continue their education. Learn about grants and programs to help your child obtain their degree at a pace and a cost that works for you both. Are they looking to go straight into employment? Discover a variety of trades and skills that will propel their future. They can learn aviation maintenance, automotive repair, culinary arts, and more to hone their talents in growing industries. Is your child interested in enlistment? We'll help them find the right path of service, whether it's military, law enforcement, fire response, or EMS. They can serve the community while learning skills that will last a lifetime. What's your E? Explore options with ePathways by visiting us online at the link below.
What inspired me to get into engineering was LEGO. So I started as a kid, as most kids do, working with LEGOs and just kind of doing your own thing, building the LEGO sets. And I would often take apart my LEGO sets, mix them together, and build something completely new. Then, in about 4th grade, I was introduced to LEGO robotics, which is where you have an actual robot that you could program. And you start with this brick, and that would feed information to LEGO motors. And it would all communicate as a system, and you could do a lot of really cool robotic tasks with that. And that was really the start of me looking into engineering. The engineering I'm looking to pursue at first is mechanical engineering. This is what I'm going to go to UCF for, and this is going to be the start of my career. A mechanical engineer can really do anything. They work with a lot of thermodynamics and a lot of vibrations and really just anything that moves. So a lot of fields use mechanical engineering. I wanted to go past that and specialize into biomedical engineering, which is more along the lines of surgical robotics and medical machinery. I wanted to develop surgical robots, and with that, I need to know exactly how the human body functions and how it functions with robotic systems. Essentially, I'll be able to design a system where a person will be able to communicate with a motor and hopefully improve their quality of life, whether this be through a surgical robot that a doctor is controlling, or whether it's prosthetic that's motorized.
I taught Josh his freshman year. He was so good with that inventor material. He picked up on it very quickly. He was ready to jump in and help other students, which I really, really appreciated. And he has carried those characteristics with him as he has moved through the program. And now, with his journey moving forward in bioengineering, I can't wait to see what he's going to make with his knee brace and the orthotics that he's trying to produce.
The current prosthetic I'm looking at developing is a load-bearing knee brace in which I'm going to take a motor or servo and attach that to the knee, which will enable a person to be able to push past what their muscles currently are able to do, whether that be because of muscle fatigue or osteoarthritis in the kneecap where they're not able to put a lot of pressure on their knee. Current knee braces really only work when walking. There's still a lot of pain when there's extra forces being applied to the knee, such as walking upstairs or standing up from sitting down, things you and I normally don't think about. But for someone that has severe arthritis in their knee, this is hugely painful.
The strongest advantages of project-based learning, that hands-on experience that allows you to manipulate that material, really solidifies in the brain exactly how those things work.
The thing I would say about this program where it exceeds the most is the more you use it, the more it'll benefit you.
Let you breathe for one second. Tell me when you're ready. Of course. Good evening, everyone. If I could ask you to take your seats, please. We'll get started. It's on one. Is that better? You can hear me, right? Everybody? Can you hear me in the audience? Yes, no? Okay, thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular school board meeting for Tuesday, November 18, 2025. Please let the record reflect that Member Sanchez, Member Dellinger, Member Davis, Vice Chair Garrick, and myself are present, along with Superintendent Beeman, Attorney Cole Palmer, our amazing board clerk Jill, and welcome to our November meeting, everyone. Thank you. Superintendent, I believe we have a special invocation this evening. Would you like to introduce the introducing?
Yes, absolutely. The invocation and pledge will be provided by a senior student from Lake Howell High School, Nyla Trice, and she will be introduced by Lake Howell Principal, Mr. Michael Howard.
Thank you.
Evening, Superintendent Beeman. My pleasure to introduce tonight's student invoker, Nyla Trice. Nyla is a senior at Lake Howell High School and the familiar voice you hear each morning as she leads the Pledge of Allegiance in the daily announcements. I recently read a story about a student who was asked, "What does a principal do?" The student replied, "He does the announcements and eats a donut." Well, thanks to Nyla's outstanding work each morning, my job has been simplified. I now simply enjoy a cup of coffee and a donut while she handles the announcements flawlessly. Without further ado, I'm proud to introduce Nyla Trice.
Hello, I am Nyla Trice. I am a senior at Lake Howell High School, and I honestly, I love my school. Throughout my four years of high school, I can say that I have been a very involved student. To name a few activities that I've been in, I have been in a competitive dance team my freshman year, a Christian organization named Crew for four years, a leader for three. I have been the co-captain to a step team at my school called Phi Omega Nu. I am a member of NHS and I am in student government. I lead spirit crew because I'm just so spirited, you know? Lake Howell is a spirited school. So based off of that, what I especially love about Lake Howell High School is the many opportunities that our school offers and how students are able to let creativity flow. I recently started my own club at Lake Howell High School named The Architects. Architecture but spelled with an X, you know, because it has a cool swing to it. And in the club, we explored the architecture industry, which is a club that we're allowed to kind of just explore the different fields of architecture, and it really helps people figure out what they would be interested in in that industry. In addition to that, our school has other fun, interesting clubs that can introduce students to many career pathways, such as a Girls Engineering Club, Chemistry Club, Cosmetology Club, Model UN, and that's not even half of it. Also, a huge plus of my school would be that it's one of the most spirited schools in Florida, all thanks to, of course, our most spirited principal, Mr. Howard. So now that I'm done bragging about my school, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. It's wonderful to hear that your experience was much like my own three students. My youngest went to Croods, but I have three Silverhawks, so we love Lake Howell. Thank you. The roll call order for this evening is Member Dellinger, Member Davis, Member Sanchez, Vice Chair Garrick, and then myself. And we have one acknowledgement form. It actually came from Mr. Bugos, but it's to recognize all SCPS employees in honor of American Education Week. And I see a lot of red for ed in the audience, so thank you all for being here. Congratulations. Is that adequate?
That's perfect.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other PTA or School Advisory Council reps in the audience, BAB? No? Nope. Okay, thank you. Superintendent, do you have any agenda modifications?
Yes, the addendum for a good cause is marked on our electronic agenda as addendum item. Also, board members, we have an employee matter that must be addressed tonight, and so I'm pulling for separate consideration to follow public comments, item CJ, as it relates to Mr. Antoine Baez, which is on page 728 of the materials.
Thank you. School board members, do you have any agenda modifications? We'll start with Member Dellinger.
No, I have none. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Davis. Any modifications?
No modifications.
Thank you, Member Sanchez.
No modifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
No modifications, Chair.
And I have none as well. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you. Member Sanchez, Member Dellinger. Thank you. Okay, let's call for a vote on favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Items removed or separate. Do we have anything, Superintendent, for removal?
No, it will be followed by under public comments.
Okay. Superintendent, do we have any presentations or recognitions this evening?
Yes, we do. We'll start with our Veteran of the Month, Ms. Staley, who's an instructional coach at the A-rated Hamilton Elementary. She'll be introduced by the proud principal of Hamilton, Mr. Adrian Fuller.
Thank you. Board members, will you join me down?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Ms. Heather M. Staley is a Seminole County student alumni that attended TW Lawton Elementary, Jackson Heights Middle School, and is a second-generation graduate from Oviedo High School. Airman 1st Class Heather M. Staley honorably served the United States Air Force from 1992 to 1995 as a services specialist, contributing to critical support operations during and following the Gulf War. Stationed at Cannon Air Force Base, the 27th Special Operations Wing, which focuses on specialized and contingency operations for the US Air Force's Special Operation Forces. She played a vital role in ensuring mission readiness and the welfare of deployed personnel through her diverse expertise in airline services, mortuary affairs, and search and recovery operations. During her tenure, Airman 1st Class Staley provided essential airline and lodging support, coordinating travel logistics for service members deploying and returning from the Middle East Theater of Operations. Her efficiency and professionalism ensured that Air Force personnel could focus on their missions with confidence, knowing that operational support was handled with precision and care. In her capacity in mortuary affairs, she rendered compassionate and dignified service to fallen airmen and their families, assisting in the preparation and return of remains. Her attention to detail and respect for protocol reflected the highest standards of military service, embodying the Air Force's core values of integrity first, service before self, and excellence in all we do. Throughout her service, Airman 1st Class Staley demonstrated professionalism, dedication, and compassion in every aspect of her duties. Her contributions to the services career field during the Gulf War exemplify the essential behind-the-scenes support that enables the success of every mission. After completing her military service, Ms. Staley pursued higher education at the University of Central Florida, where she earned her bachelor's degree in elementary education. Continuing her dedication to learning and service, she went on to obtain a master's degree through the Lockheed Martin K-8 mathematics and science program at the University of Central Florida. Airman 1st Class Staley comes from a proud family tradition of military service. Both her grandfather served in the US Armed Forces, and her uncle served honorably in the United States Navy. That legacy of dedication and patriotism continues through her son, who also is an Oviedo High School graduate, who is currently serving as a United States Marine, caring for the family's commitment to the defense of freedom and the values of service and sacrifice. Throughout her life, Airman 1st Class Staley has exemplified devotion to duty, compassion for others, and an unwavering spirit of service. Whether in uniform or in the classroom, her story stands as a testament to the strength of family faith and the enduring legacy of those who serve. Congratulations, Ms. Staley.
Mr. Mayor, Adrian Fuller. It's the Mayor, Adrian Fuller. Good evening, Superintendent Beeman and school board. Tonight, I am honored to recognize Ms. Sherri Brinkman as the 2025 Seminole County Farm Bureau Agriculture Educator of the Year. Ms. Brinkman is currently teaching the inaugural class of agricultural biotechnology at Oviedo High School. Through this innovative program, Ms. Brinkman is equipping students with hands-on skills and knowledge in agricultural fields. By providing students with experiences to grow their understanding of genetically-modified crops, animal biotechnology, sustainable farming, biological pest control, and food safety, she is opening the doors to students finding meaningful careers in the world of agriculture. As a pioneer in the agriculture education in Seminole County public schools, Ms. Brinkman brings a diverse background as an academic success coach, biological scientist, and educator to her students and her school. Her ability to build strong relationships, promote high expectations for herself and her students, and energy for educating future agriculture professionals makes her the ideal choice for the 2025 Seminole County Farm Bureau Agriculture Educator of the Year. Ms. Brinkman is joined here tonight by her principal, Ms. Trent Daniel. Congratulations, Ms. Brinkman. I am honored tonight to have the opportunity to acknowledge my colleague, Mrs. Minnie Cardona. We are pleased to acknowledge Mrs. Minnie Cardona, the Director of ESOL World Languages, as the 2025 Outstanding Educator for the Sunshine State Teachers to Speakers of Other Languages. That's SSTSO for those of you using acronyms. This recognition is awarded to Mrs. Cardona in honor of her dedication to English language learners in Seminole County and throughout the state of Florida. Notably, Mrs. Cardona was selected for this award for her ability to inspire students and colleagues, engage in others' learning, provide excellent service outside the classroom, actively participate in professional organizations, and relentlessly pursue professional growth. As evidenced locally by her ever-present at community events, her community outreach via the district's Student Success Express, and her unwavering voice of support for all students, particularly those seeking to share their culture and experiences as they integrate into our Seminole County community. Mrs. Cardona proves each and every day why she has been selected as the 2025 Outstanding Educator for the Sunshine State Teachers of English to Speakers of Other Languages Awardee. Congratulations, Mrs. Cardona. And finally, my final award for the evening. Congratulations to Dr. Nicola Williams, Coordinator of School Counseling Services. Dr. Williams is being recognized as the 2025 Florida School Counselor Association's School Counselor Advocate District Leader of the Year for the entire state. As shared by a member of Dr. Williams' team, Marissa Ellis, Dr. Williams has redefined what it means to be an advocate for school counseling. Through her expertise, professionalism, and warm, engaging personality, she has elevated the profession within our district. Her leadership has laid the foundation for a culture where school counselors are seen, heard, and respected as essential professionals. Because of her leadership and advocacy, the work of Seminole County school counselors is informed by a comprehensive school counseling plan, and all counselors are engaged in a district-wide comprehensive school counseling pilot with the American School Counseling Association. As they Association, as they collectively seek to elevate the role of school counselors in SCPS. Joined tonight with Dr. Williams are many of our school counselors from Seminole County public schools, members of her team, and other enthusiastic supporters. Congratulations to my friend and colleague, Dr. Nicola Williams, on being named the 2025 Florida School Counselor Association School Counselor Advocate District Leader of the Year. It's a big plaque because of all that name.
Superintendent, would you like to introduce the Focus on Student Achievement this evening?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Our FOCA presentation tonight is on the Secondary Instructional Priorities. We talked a little bit about the elementary instructional priorities last month, and we have our fabulous team here, and I'll ask them to introduce themselves for the benefit of the public.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, School Board members and Superintendent Beeman. Thank you for the opportunity to share an update on secondary instruction and the progress we are making towards our district's vision of academic excellence for every student. Before we begin, I'd like to introduce tonight's panel. I'm Demetria Faizan, Assistant Superintendent of Middle Schools. To my right, we have Mike Alba, Director of the Department of Teaching and Learning, Dr. Michelle Pizzani, Coordinator of K-12 English, Reading, and Social Studies Curriculum, and Mia Kaiser, Coordinator of K-12 Mathematics and Science Curriculum. Our instructional priorities, benchmark-aligned instruction, student engagement, monitoring for learning, and conditions for learning are the foundation for continuous improvement across our middle and high schools. These priorities guide how we support teachers, engage students, and monitor growth for every learner. Through instructional coaching meetings, assistant principal cadres, and principal leadership meetings, we are intentionally aligning our conversations, professional learning, and leadership practices to these priorities. This ensures that every strategy we implement, from classroom instruction to district-wide initiatives, move us closer to our shared goals of rigorous, equitable, and innovative learning experiences for all students. Together, we own this work, and together, we will continue to lead the way in creating learning environments where every student thrives.
Thank you. I made it a challenge, you know, to kind of create, right? It's difficult because it looks much different in the kindergarten class than it is teaching seniors, but they did an amazing job to create these documents to help support our schools kind of identify what are the instructional priorities. And I'm looking, stepping back, and what is solid instructional strategies, what is good teaching. This document hopefully is a great guidance for our schools. And then Ms. Faizan and Mr. Rice do a phenomenal job of supporting their schools when they work through their school improvement plans. So you kind of see a sample of one of Mr. Rice's documents that he works through with his principals. His theme there is "Why Not?", so he has certainly kind of carried that theme through throughout all his meetings, but they do a phenomenal job just helping their schools kind of identify what those priority needs are, and more importantly, kind of monitor that work as the year goes on to help them meet their goals that they had decided upon at the beginning of the year. As, you know, Ms. Faizan mentioned, the instructional priority specifically, benchmark-aligned instructions is the priority for all schools this year. So to kind of, as a companion document, companion resources for our schools, our administrators or teachers have these PLC documents. Again, you saw these at the last meeting, but again, these documents support all PLC meetings through K-12. So very similar resources that you saw. Again, these were developed with our content specialists within teaching and learning, but certainly with the support of administrators, coaches, to get feedback on what kind of resources they need to be, to help lead that work, to make sure that the PLCs are just a time that it can be productive for their members. Your time is very valuable, so we want to ensure that their time in PLCs are well-spent, and they see its value as to support them as educators and eventually help support their students. We want to help them within their PLCs to kind of make sure they're utilizing data effectively when they're planning for future instruction. We want to make sure that the tasks that students are being asked to do are aligned to the rigor of the benchmarks, which is critical, right? If we're not doing that, we're going to fall short. And then the importance of bringing students' tasks to PLC meetings. I mean, that is a great way to really identify what students are being asked to do by really looking at, well, let's bring some assignments to PLCs, and let's compare those assignments to what's on the benchmark, the language of the benchmarks, and see if it really is truly meeting the full intent of that benchmark, the rigor of the benchmark. Again, these documents were shared with principals at our July trainings, and we're continuing that work and continuing the conversations through our meetings throughout the year, whether it's through level meetings in our seminar, whether it's AP cadres, coaches' meetings. These documents are continued to be discussed and refined as we go through the year. And then the other thing I want to bring up as far as secondary, we really, again, we hit the ground running this school year on August 6, which is one of the pre-planning days. You know, it's a challenge sometimes once schools start and students arrive to find times to get teachers together to be able to provide some professional development for them. So we were just very appreciative of the assistant superintendents, K-12, and the principals to allow us the opportunity to give us some time with their teachers. You know, there's only four days of pre-planning, so them to carve out a half-day is a big ask. So we really took that as a challenge to us. We wanted to make sure that whatever they received was of value for that time taken away from other things they could have done that week. So you see some examples there of professional development that was offered. These sessions were really, came about through student achievement data. You know, again, that's what drives our work, right? We want to make sure that our students are successful. So given the last year's results, that led us to different priority needs, I know we talked about in the summer, certainly when you attended the Superintendent Leadership Conference, the data was shared with you, and some of the areas there probably look familiar, right? Biology, math, all those issues were kind of rose up as areas that needed more focus this year and attention. So you'll see, you see that reflected certainly along with some other courses like intensive reading, and Operation Graduation is also something that Mr. Rice leads. So those courses, we were able to meet with those teachers, and again, this was just the beginning. This is not a one-and-done training. You'll hear from Dr. Pizzani and Ms. Kaiser kind of how this work continues to be progressed through the year to help support our teachers throughout the school year to make sure that these students receive the best instruction possible. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Pizzani.
So within that model that we have, we have been working closely with our literacy coaches at the high school level, as well as the assistant principals, to kind of build their background and update their knowledge on the science of reading and what research shows us about intertwining the different areas of reading as far as vocabulary and comprehension and not isolating those skills. And so then, in turn, the coaches go back and they support their teachers. Now that we've kind of built that background knowledge, we'll, from here for the next semester, we're really, and even now, we're really starting to dig in and offer that extra layer of support in doing some modeling for teachers on what this looks like and some planning and so on, to really dig in and help them to be supported in this area. When we look at content area reading, that's another, like, it's a very broad term, or it's kind of like literacy across really the campuses, our secondary campuses, and helping specifically our science and our social studies teachers to infuse some reading strategies within their classrooms to allow their students to better access, you know, their science and social studies content. To better support this effort, this summer, we had a boot camp, and we partnered with our friends from the Florida Center for Reading Research and FSU to give our teachers some extra support. Each of the secondary campuses had a couple of representatives who attended the boot camp to learn more about infusing strategies throughout the year. And then for middle school, our focus has been to kind of continue that work with both our literacy coaches and our assistant principals, really helping them to help their teachers and support on each of the campuses. So in turn with that, their literacy coaches really are continuing that work and supporting on a regular basis those science and social studies teachers that their schools have identified. Notebook LM is something new with AI. We talked a little bit about it at the elementary meeting that we had recently. It's very similar from a literacy perspective to the version of it that we have at elementary, and that it is a notebook that has just the documents from our framework, lessons and so on, text, many of the texts are also available in there, as well as our state guidance documents, so that teachers, as they work either in their PLC or as they're doing some planning, they can interact with it, kind of like a chatbot you might see on a website, and it will just draw information from those documents. So it will be more Florida CPS-specific than a general AI instrument might be. In some areas that you might, that teachers might be able to explore with, they could use it to kind of partner with to think about what stations might look like for a particular text, or even to ask it about ideas for which text they might use for a certain benchmark that they know their students are still struggling with. We'll offer them that. And then, of course, partnering with our families is something that's very important, and we appreciate that continued support from families. Reading at home is something that we want to continue to encourage beyond the elementary years, that 20 minutes in the evening. Sometimes, you know, as students get older, it's maybe their ticket to getting to their devices at home before they have to do some extra reading. You can also have pick-family vocabulary words. The state does offer parent guides through Grade 8 that are of help, and then CPOMs offer some tutorials as well. So with that, I will turn things over to Ms. Kaiser.
We were excited this year to prioritize. Okay. Our students consistently do well in biology, but we know there's always an opportunity to enhance what it is that we're doing. So we made some really intentional actions to kind of support that this year. We did relook at how to, are we scheduling students? Is that better? Okay, thank you. So we went to look at the scheduling to make sure that students were placed in the appropriate course based on their readiness and make sure we're providing opportunities for students to take those courses. In August, like Mr. Alba was saying, we did have a professional learning opportunity for all of our biology teachers, so we can really dig into those context-dependent sets that they need to be able to do and how to analyze labs. We've been reinforcing all of this work through a quarterly deep dive into their assessment data, so teachers know exactly where students are in their learnings and know how to respond. We also have district-led PLCs that we're supporting, and then, of course, ongoing support for teachers in their classrooms. Thank you to Ms. Beeman. We have been able to implement 12 full-time instruction, or math, coaches in all of our middle schools this year for the very first time, so we're very excited about that. To make sure that we're setting a strong foundation for them, we've partnered with the UF Lassinger Center to implement the Math Coach Micro-Credential Program. We are the only district in Florida that is working on this pilot, so we're very excited to be learning from them and being able to support our coaches in this way. Coaches are also participating in bi-weekly trainings to help support the work that they're doing at their school, so that they can be working with teachers directly in their classroom and during PLC time. Oh, I think you went, there we are. Okay. We are excited that this is the third year that we're working with AlterMath. So AlterMath is an AI teaching tool developed by the University of Florida. Basically, it works where students are learning by teaching is the approach, where they're actually tutoring a virtual AI peer during their interactions through the platform that's built into Math Nation, which is their adopted curriculum. Students who have participated in this in the past have been one and a half times more likely to earn a learning gain on their FAST or EOC than students who have not been part of this study, so we're excited to be going into year three with this. We've also, this year, launched the Math Language Routine Study. This is available for teachers who are teaching Grades 3 through Grade 8. Basically, it provides bite-sized professional learning. It has guides and videos, and there's a collaboration component to it, so that they're more easily implementing those critical language routines that require students to really talk about the math that they're learning. Currently, we have eight middle schools, we have teachers at eight different middle schools participating in this study this year. For math, we also have Notebook LM. This is available for all of our middle and high school accountability courses, so 6, 7, 8, algebra, and geometry. This is a source that allows for teachers, it's an AI resource that allows for teachers to identify specific remediation opportunities for their students by utilizing the connected benchmarks. Because we don't, the math benchmarks don't spiral, we have to be very intentional about how we implement that remediation, so we don't lose instructional time reteaching things that we could naturally just connect. This has been a great opportunity for teachers to both build stations and to identify those conceptual bases for math, so we know that we're not just teaching in routines and procedures. Families can continue to support their student's success in math at home by just really being positive about math and the confidence that they have in their child's ability. Having students explain how they solved a problem or what an error might be in a potential multiple-choice answer, those definitely help students to deepen their understanding. All of the resources that students are using in class, so CPOMs, Math Nation, Savis, iXL, those are all available for students through Clever, so that they can have access to math tutorials and lessons at home. Math Nation has an entire part of their platform that's really designed for students to be supported in math at home. There are videos, homework help, test reviews, all of those things are available there as well. Stepping stones and test yourself are work that students can do for practice, and there's videos that are connected, so if they get a problem wrong, they can watch a video to learn how to do it correctly. And then there's also videos for parents there that really help to connect how it is that they may have learned it when they were in school to what is being presented in the classroom.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Board members, do you have questions or comments for the presentation? Again, our rule call order, Member Dellinger, you're first.
So I was just going back to the micro-credential, I think, from the Lassinger Center. I just wondered how many hours it was. I'm assuming teachers can earn PD points for doing that, but what's involved in that? It's very interesting.
So the folks from UF come, once a month, they come and spend four hours with our co- So the folks from UF come, um, once a month, they come and spend four hours with our coaches in the afternoon. There's going to be a variety of things. Basically, it's a mixture of the UF Coaching Micro-Credential and the Math Matrix Micro-Credential. So basically, it's like a marrying of those two things. So they'll do some coaching work, but then also some math pedagogy work.
And so at the end, however many hours?
Yeah, I'm not sure how many hours it is because there's face-to-face meetings once a month for four hours. And then they'll also be doing some homework and then they'll have, they won't have to do the videos like they do with the UF Coaching because it's basically like we're building the plane as we're flying it kind of thing. So they are really kind of like helping us to figure out what is the best way to integrate all of these things so that we can, they can learn for, you know, other districts.
All right. Thank you very much.
Their plan is to roll it out statewide next year. So this is a good opportunity really for us to gain in their knowledge, but it's a win for them as well because then they get feedback on, yeah, the activities that they're going to want the teachers to go through. So it's, it's a good win-win for both us as a district and for them that are going to launch this statewide.
Well, and specifically math. Right. You know, yeah. Thank you.
Member Davis, any questions? Member Sanchez, do you have any?
Hi, first of all, thank you so much for the presentation. A lot of thought and a lot went into it. So it looks like we're of course, cutting edge of the edge of everything again, which I love. A couple of questions I have. One, Mr. Alba, the cluster meetings that you guys are talking about, are we able to not just cluster them within an area? But for example, if it's a biology teacher, if they are able to meet with peer teachers that are teaching the same subject throughout the county where they have time to collaborate and discuss and share, beg, borrow and share ideas with each other? Are we able to do that?
And I want to speak for me, but that, that's basically what you're describing is kind of the, the PLC. So that's the, provides teachers opportunity at, you know, to collaborate with other teachers and other campuses.
So we are, they're, they're able to go onto other campuses and see?
Yeah, they're meeting virtually. So we meet virtually and then they get into breakout rooms. And so we're clustering some schools together. So PLCs are able to collaborate to deep dive the benchmarks and to, and to devise lessons for those.
Will we be able to go into the schools instead of just doing it virtually or is it some option eventually that they'll be able to do that, maybe over the summer? I know their schedules are tight. I get.
They'll be meeting with all of them on January 5th for Professional Learning Day.
Wonderful.
And so they will all be clustered with schools who have both similar demographics and similar data.
Wonderful. Thank you. And then my other question I have with the AlterMath and the, what was it, the math?
Language routines.
I'm sorry?
The math language routines.
Math language routine. I think AI is great, but I'm also really nervous with the amount of technology and overuse of technology. I think it's great. Don't get me wrong. I'm worried about our kids' eyes and the, the fact that these things aren't filtered and, you know, the blue lights and not being filtered and the amount of time that they're on them. Are they able to do hands-on activities along with this where they're not just on the computer and technology where they have that paper pencil? I'm kind of old fashioned when it comes to stuff like that.
Yeah, the AlterMath is really designed to only be utilized a maximum of 30 minutes per week.
That's good to hear.
Which can be done at, in the classroom or at home.
That's wonderful. So it's 30 minutes, not like the whole class time.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That makes me feel so much better. And then dyslexia training when we're doing the literacy portion is something I asked during my board book review and something that I've been working on for years with. And starting to get the colleges to realize how important it is to make sure our teachers are trained with dyslexia training. How are we able, do we have the capabilities and the teachers trained to diagnose any disabilities with dyslexia? Issues that they may see or any just, any kind of just issues that they may have within that framework with the tracking?
I would say that, you know, that kind of through the normal process, you know, MTSS or Child Study that, you know, teachers have concerns, they can kind of bring that up and, and bring evidence of what they're seeing in the classroom. And then kind of as a, as a school team kind of determine if extra supports are needed.
Okay. I know, I'm hoping that our teachers are getting trained in it because I know it's not a state mandated training yet. And so hopefully eventually, because they're saying one out of three children have a form of dyslexia and it's concerning. So we're just trying to make sure that we get that.
Right. And over the last several years, we have provided a lot of training to both our elementary and our secondary literacy coaches in particular about like those foundational skills, which is where you find a lot of that initially to begin with. So we are working to, to strengthen their understanding of what to do, as Mr. Alba said, once they, they notice that those, those are, continue to be areas of deficit.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Great presentation.
Vice Chair.
A call of things. First of all, thank you very much for, for the presentation. Superintendent and Ms. Faison and I had the opportunity to visit some middle schools and very excited about the coaches and making sure that we have the support in there for our teachers, especially in areas that need more intensive work. So I am very appreciative. Thank you, Superintendent, for making that recommendation and excited to see coaches being approved, hopefully approved in our book tonight. Also, we've had the opportunity to see small groups in action more and more actively in, in middle school and upper grades, which has been phenomenal to see the kids engaged and in, in every level. At, you know, most advanced levels as well as some of the intensive levels. I think it really gives the kids a better grasp and it allows the teachers to take some of those kids aside and work group by group. So great work. I look forward to continuing to see the progress for our kids and I do appreciate the teacher's support and making sure that we can give them the tools to be as effective as possible and make sure that they're supported. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I am especially excited about the parental portion that's available online. I've heard from many, not many, but a few parents that I don't understand how to do this. I need a tutor for my child. So I'm very grateful that that's a component available online and videos included with that. And the other thing I too was thinking about the AlterMath and the routines of the math language routines. We had a student government group speak to us regarding, regarding the use of AI. And this, you know, some of the math books in upper grades have the answers in the back and so forth. And this student would work out the problem and would never get the answer correctly. So would put that into AI, just the reverse of what you're seeing. Rather than teaching, she would do the problem and, and then figure out which step she perhaps missed. So I love that this is a tool that we're embracing and cautious about it, but I'm also excited about, I think it's, it's the way we're heading. So thank you all very much for your time and dedication and sharing the programs. I wish we could afford another best summer ever just to enhance again, but I appreciate that you're working within the parameters that we have available. So thank you all very much. So that concludes our focus on district highlights. It's now time for public comments, agenda items. Could you read the statement, Vice Chair, please?
The purpose of the public participation segments of the board meeting is to allow the public to address matters within the board's jurisdiction and not to resolve individual grievances or disputes. Public comments related to education, the board agenda and the district are welcome and encouraged. But public comment segments are not forums to engage in personal attacks against school system employees or board members. To maintain orderly conduct, the public, the public comment segments of the meeting may not be used as open forums to discuss matters unrelated to education, to support or oppose candidates for public office, including presentation of political and/or campaign issues, announcing candidacy and/or campaigning, or to engage in commercial speech attempting to sell a service or product to the board or the public. Nor are they forums to address matters involving disciplinary actions of any kind pending claims, complaints or litigation against the district or district personnel. Public comment segments durations are as follows. Agenda items, limited to three minutes. One group representative speaking on a proposition, maximum of six minutes. Speaker must remain on topic for agenda item proposition. Non-agenda items, limited to two minutes. Speaker shall direct their comments only to the board and may not address the audience or other speakers. No speaker may yield his or her time to any other person. Generally substitutions of speakers will not be allowed.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'd like to call Nina Sandberg. If you'll come over to the podium, please. Good evening, Nina.
Hi. I'm Nina Sandberg. SCPS has a very negative history of not holding its own employees accountable for educator misconduct or employee misconduct. The students have a code of conduct, but select employees have been freely allowed to violate the student's code of conduct as employees. And in the past, there has been a very severe lack of clarification as to the rules of conduct for employees. For example, when my child was being bullied, harassed, ridiculed, targeted, discriminated against, retaliated against and mistreated by select SCP employees, SPS employees at his school, I had no recourse as his parent to stop it. Four school board members and one superintendent refused to stop it. And this abuse escalated into full-blown child abuse that was being done to an 11-year-old boy at school by SCPS employees. No one would stop it. Every day, my mother reminded me that children commit suicide over much less than what these employees were doing to my child at school. Suicide is a problem inside of SCS. Do not ever assume that it is only other students who are driving any child to suicide. I watched a certain SCS employee who was supposed to be fired try to drive my own child to suicide in the name of retaliation. I had to yank my child out of SCS to stop it. I had to do some homeschool and private school to stop it. No matter how many times I reported it, no one in the district offices would stop it. No one. Many SCS employees have been fired for doing much less than what this retaliator did to my child. He was not fired. He was promoted. Outrageous. And he went on to treat other children very badly. There is no excuse for this. The employee code of conduct needs to include the student code of conduct in it. It needs to be very specific and detailed. And it needs to, there need to be actual consequences for an employee misbehaving as an employee inside of SCS schools. When it is reported, it needs to be stopped. If a parent is reporting it to you over and over and over again, you need to take it seriously. You need to stop it. You can't let it continue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Russi? Mr. Russi, are you, are you here? Would you step to the podium, please?
Chair, I believe, if, Chair, is this the, the item that I pulled?
Yes.
And I do believe that it would be appropriate for Mr. Bias to present his, his concerns regarding the recommendation that is before the board. And Mr. Russi is in a position to respond after he has had that opportunity.
Okay. Is Mr. Bias in the audience? Please, will you come up to the microphone, please? Good evening. Good evening, sir. You can go ahead if you'll state your name.
You want me to explain to you why I should, you should not stop my paycheck?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Yes.
You'll have six minutes to explain.
So basically, ORD is basically report to a psychologist. They're basically the, the school in journey zero five seven one, it doesn't have proper AC, doesn't have proper maintenance, doesn't have walls and not being taken care. So the, the school runs on the federal program. So she's basically on intervening. The school has mold inside. There's, there's all the part of the warehouse in 1722, there's mold in the ceiling, et cetera. So all I did is report, the school is neglect. That's all I did. And then she responded back that she didn't want to speak to me. As far as I'm concerned, it basically involves student. So I was thinking that basically she can talk to somebody else in the school system to help, to basically help the children to have proper things in the school. So I've been reporting to numbers of people in emails about the school don't have computers that when I was over there in 2021, didn't have books, don't have bookcases, doesn't have reading books. Doesn't have a dining area the kids can't eat. They eat constantly inside, in the classroom. And a proper place to basically, they have open pavilions, so it rains hard, they get wet, so they cannot enjoy their, their time. They have small basketball court, so it doesn't have equal right for the children. All I did is speak for the children. I spoke for the children. I spoke out of place. So it seemed that I told numbers of people in Education Support Center, it's in the body of facility service to basically report to you. And they say I'm supposed to report to them, but I don't work for facility service. I tried to basically tell King Do about it. They say, she say call the secretary. So I called the secretary and they never respond back to me. And then I got numbers of problem in the past, checks don't come, don't come on time in my mailbox. And I don't have access, proper access to emails every day since 2021. So. Something, I don't have the email. Then they come back over there and told me that they're saying such or such email and I don't have it. So I cannot do nothing about it. I talked to ISA about it and I cannot do about it. I don't control your computers. Your tech controller, I don't control it. So all I'm doing is for the children. So I'm reporting neglect in the building. So you got mold in the building, I report that. You got mold in, over there about TL, Teaching and Learning Bathroom, you got broken toilets when I got there, not proper bolts in the bottom of the toilet. So that, so you sit in the toilet, they dance. They were not maintained. I put all record in that. All, all the manager custodial service tells me that's maintenance, don't worry about it. But it's a safety hazard for the children to basically sit in broken toilets, broken legs, inappropriate things flooding. That's all I'm doing. That's basically, if you work on the district, you have to report those things. Don't report it, then you're in neglect too. You're just neglecting like everybody else. That's all I'm doing. So I don't know how that can affect somebody. How that can affect my check on doing reporting neglect? Nobody respond back to me. Hey, I, I do understand. I got on the list, this and that. There's nothing I can do about it. I'm not the repair guy. They're the repair guy. There's all the things involved that I don't want to put in the matter of the public because I don't want to expose the service. It will be for them.
And does that complete your, your statement?
I don't care about the children, have the proper things in the school, proper, you know, security doors are open constantly. People leave, you know, about around 5:30, no big deal. There's graffiti constantly in the desk, you know, verbal graffiti, I informing, don't, I don't don't Thomas. Walk around me like I don't say so. I don't know what I'm doing in building. They just basically, nobody from outside. Remember custodial service is not a regular part of the campus. They in zero five seven one, I'm in 911. So they probably see me, I'm not in there. I just working for the county. I'm just, I represent the children. The children come first. I come second. The security is first, I'm second. That's it. I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
If I don't get my check, it goes to them. The report goes to them.
Understand. Okay. Now it's, it's time for Mr. Russi. If you would please come to the podium. I think we can all agree, we all appreciate our custodians and the work that you do. You keep us, you're an important part of keeping us running. Thank you. Mr. Russi?
Good evening, board members. I'm going to kind of read a summary.
I'm going to kind of read a summary and of what brought us here this evening to where we're at right now.
Okay.
For the recommendations. So on January 31st of 2025, Mr. Bias was placed on paid administrative leave due to concerns of unprofessional behavior with his supervisor. During a subsequent meeting with Mr. John Wilks, Director of Maintenance, and Mr. Billy Powell, Ombudsman, Professional Standards Investigator, additional concerns were noted regarding his actions and answers to the questions that they provided to him. In consideration of these events, we determined that Mr. Bias would need to be assessed for a fitness for duty in accordance with School Board Policy 4161, Fitness for Duty. Mr. Bias was assessed by a medical doctor on March 24th of 25 who determined that he was not fit for duty at that time. He recommended additional evaluations by medical providers. On April 4, 2025, as a result of the doctor's findings, a letter was sent to Mr. Bias notifying him that his administrative leave with pay was extended through June or July 3rd of 2025 to allow him time to complete the recommended evaluations. On July 14th of 25, a letter was sent to Mr. Bias that as of that date, he had not completed the recommended medical evaluations or taken steps toward receiving a medical clearance. In the letter, Mr. Bias's administrative leave with pay was extended an additional 60 days through September 15th of 2025 to allow him time, to, allow him additional time to receive a fitness for duty clearance. He was also notified in that letter that if he failed to complete the required steps by September 15th, it may result in him being placed on unpaid administrative leave. On October 6th of 25, a letter was sent to Mr. Bias letting him know that as of that date, he had failed to complete the necessary medical evaluations or taken steps toward receiving a medical clearance. And we would recommend that he be placed on unpaid administrate, administrative leave at this board meeting. Excuse me. In, in the same letter, he was also notified that he must obtain a fitness for duty clearance from a medical provider in order to return to work. He was told that failure to complete these evaluations by February 20 of 2026, further action may result, including the potential termination of his employment with Seminole County Schools. As of this date, Mr. Bias has not completed the necessary medical evaluations or taken steps toward receiving a medical clearance to return to duty.
Okay, Mr. Bias, do you have any response that you'd like to share with us? Do you want to have any other comments? I'm sorry.
He asked me to do psychiatry. I told him if it was going to pay, I'd do it. But do it for my insurance, I'm not doing psychiatry. It has to do when you have anxiety and you have issue with your wife and you have issues with your relationship. I never shared nothing with my wife to him and nobody hears. So I'm not doing psychiatry. Now you want me to do what's called a lab work? It's basically they draw blood out of me and they do, I do a urine test, then you suspect that I'm under the influence and any medication is different. But I don't take medicine. So I'm not suspicious of any medication. Now mold, when you got mold in the building, it gives you vomit, it give you nausea, it takes your concentration out of you. And basically you cannot cook very well. It give you rash in your body, it give you itchy, you sweat out of control, it, it gives you cramp in your body. So if those people keep getting exposed over there, I'm forced to do a report that he's not going to afford. Who is not going to afford because the numbers of people, they're going to hurt. They have Melbourne over there in that school for year. And Melbourne, the, when I read symptoms on, on mold, Melbourne has them. You rub your head constantly, you scratch your body, Melbourne has them. So their office and the rest too, they're supposed to mold. Not just, not just the kids, the staff too. You don't have HIVAC, you have great HIVAC here, I can breathe it. Over there in 0571, in Journey Academy, they don't have it. Then I brought portable, portable AC units and I had to empty the buckets in the bottom and dumping a 50 gallon bucket so they continue having air inside the school. That's not proper care. So from 2121 to 2024 now, there's no, 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 who knows what's happening today now? Because I'm not there. How long this is going to happen to them? How long is, how long is being happened to all of them? You got mold hanging out of the roof in warehouse in 1722, you got numbers of things stored, you got food, drinks etcetera. They basically will flunk the agricultural service, your certification will be provoked and basically they will request you to remove all food out of there because you have mold. You cannot have food or drinks, doesn't matter the seal, inside warehouse has mold. So if all those things were taken care from the beginning, I would not be here. I can, you cannot send me to psychiatry when I have symptoms or mold or sickness. Now I've been off of it, I don't have rash, I don't have, I don't have the itchy. And I'm good, I can breathe, good, healthy. If I'm reporting neglect, uh, neglect show, I'm not reporting abusing, I'm reporting neglect show. So if I, if I'm reporting to somebody, there's graffiti in the wall and goes, ah, that's maintenance. I report to maintenance, maintenance didn't do nothing and to basically report to the county. And then things got taken care. To me to seeing that if I report to the county, it take care because somebody's getting beat up in the hand. It's just a disciplinary referral, that's it. That's all it is. It's not, nobody's doing behavior. I don't believe maintenance has the proper parts etcetera for them do the work in the daily basis. They got new trucks, but I don't believe they have the merchant like they're supposed to. They have the merchant, they have the tools, they have all the things they need, they're going to work. If they don't have all the things they need, they're not going to work. They're just going to finish doing this little job and they're going to go somewhere out and sit for a six hour until the part arrive there. That's all it is. Mold is, it's not going to be removed by maintenance. Mold is like a vessel, you have to call a special company to remove the mold. And blood, it spill, big spill, it's the same thing. We cannot do it, you have to call company to remove it in a proper manner. I cannot remove mold, I'm not certified to remove mold.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you for your comment, Mr. Bias. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend that Mr. Bias be suspended without pay.
Is there a motion? So moved. One second. Second, is there any discussion? Saying none, I'll call the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Um, Mr., uh, do we want Mr. Russi to talk with him afterwards?
Absolutely. Mr. Bias, if you would please step to the side and, and Mr. Russi can discuss with you the next steps. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Thank you for being here. Okay, it's now time for Board Items for Discussion. Member Dallinger, any comment? Should we take a quick five-minute recess, Board members? Okay.
Testing.
There we go.
Okay, there we are. Welcome back, everybody. If I could ask you to take your seats, please. Okay, it's now time for board items for discussion this evening. We'll start with Member Dellinger. Do you have any comments, please?
I do. I know, I know we've all attended many events this last month, and I'm really happy to have the opportunity to meet with people and support our principals and teachers and participate in some truly outstanding school visits, but I'm not going to talk about all of them because I know everybody else will. I did want to mention a couple of things. I think it was last week, I participated with some other board members and other elected officials in the Youth in Government Program at South Seminole Middle School, organized by the League of Women Voters. And we had the chance to interact with about, I think about forty students. They asked all kinds of questions, and it was a lot of fun, but also an opportunity to talk with students about leadership and hear also what their thoughts and ideas are. That was really a great experience. I'd also like to mention the Employee of the Year Celebration last week. I'm sure some of you might have been there. It was an incredible event, and it just brings, brings to mind and reminds you of how many individuals go to extraordinary measures to support their schools and departments and students. It really is overwhelming, the kindness that our employees have, that they show the students, the departments that they work in. And I took a message from Ms. Gonzalez, who used the word connections, excellence, and impact. And these folks really do impact our schools, our students. I also had the privilege yesterday of speaking with students at Lake Mary High School, the Student Government Association, I think that's association. At their, they meet, you know, several times a year. And got to be there with Mr. Godro yesterday and, and his friend Jason Bieber. No, Justin Bieber, excuse me. Got to get it right. Justin Bieber got a phone call. I mean, it's really, anyway. The students are amazing, and I have a lot of confidence in their ability to be the future leaders of our cities and country. And who knows what they're going to do in the future? They're incredibly smart. They're motivated and have a lot of ideas that we can't even think about, probably. You know, it's, they're so creative and thoughtful. And they have amazing teachers that take a lot of time working with them because all of those kids are doing things like planning the homecoming dance and doing all kinds of things, not only events, but mentoring their fellow students, doing all kinds of things. And those teachers really work so hard with them and are such great examples for them about leadership. Today, I attended a rescheduled Veterans Day Celebration at Lyman High School, and it was pretty incredible. Many veterans showed up. They were still able to come. And the JROTC students did an incredible job. And our National Anthem and TAVS was played by two trumpet players, and it was very moving and a wonderful ceremony. And then to tap it all off this afternoon, no, this morning, we had the Youth Summit with a theme of Why Not? And I think it made all of us think about challenges and opportunities ahead of us and our students. Students that were there are really, you know, again, amazing young people. And our student leaders, the announcers, are our former students, and they're incredible this way. So it was a great way to start the day. So that's it for me. Thank you.
And how many of us ordered the book Why Not? While we were sitting there?
I ordered it while I was sitting there. So I'll be reading that.
It was this very sweet story.
It was great. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Member Davis, you are up next. Your microphone's not on. Sorry.
One of the events that took place a couple of weeks after we met here last month was the Night of Impact run by our foundation. And they raised, I think, two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars.
That's correct.
For Take Stock in Children, for supplies for some of our homeless students, for some of our teachers, scholarships, STEM program, and college, yeah, college scholarships. So I thought that was really, really nice that people got together for a fundraiser for our students. The foundation, I have to give a lot of credit to them because they raise money all the time for our students where sometimes our state budgets and our local budgets don't cover some of these things. So, you know, just as, you know, sometimes you need a neighbor or a friend, you know, schools need help too. And the foundation has come through for us over and over and over again. So I'm really proud of the work that they're doing, and I'm proud of our community because our community contributes all of the time, just in coming to some of these events, supporting your students, talking to one another about kindness, showing up here concerned about what's going on in your school district. I mean, these are all things that make a community stronger, and it helps our students in the end. Eventually, they're going to go out and make something of themselves. They're going to decide what path they're going to lead, and I think that they will remember this. And a lot of them are going to stay right here in the community and try to do something good around here. You all are setting a perfect example for them. And I want to thank you for that. But just seeing the help that our students have the privilege of receiving because, you know, it's from the hearts of all of you, our foundation, our community leaders, our vast companies and corporations that want to pitch in and help. I can tell you that it doesn't go unappreciated from our students. And they are very grateful, very grateful. As far as some shout out I want to give to our superintendent, she is still going school by school. At every school, she gives out her Spark Awards. One for a lucky student that is described to her by the principal and some other teachers as far as why he deserves a Spark Award, why he's a leader in his school, why he is admired by the rest of the students. There's one for employee, and there's one for teacher. And we have, what, sixty-seven schools?
Yes.
She goes to every single one. We kind of get to split it up. But she goes to every single one, and she recognizes someone from each school. And the last time we went, I heard a lot of talk in the background. And I wanted you to let, I wanted her to let, I wanted to let her know that it is most appreciated by everyone in the school. That's solid. So, anyway, thank you all for being here again. I did want to thank Board Member Sanchez and Sergeant Jackson, which I thought I saw her leave here a little while ago. But if you could just let her know, thank you. Last time I was here, I had an issue, and they, they were able to notice it and, and got me out. And I, I got picked up, and I felt a whole lot better. And so I just wanted to thank them, and thank you all for your patience.
Thank you, Member Davis. Member Sanchez, you're up next, please.
First, I want to talk about one of my biggest passions, of course, is American Education Week. And being an educator, or being in education for thirty-seven years and twenty-six years in the classroom, I can't thank our teachers, faculty, staff, employees, anybody that's in our line of work. That means from custodians to anybody that's employed in the educational world. It makes a huge impact. And to me, I celebrate each and every one of you for going above and beyond, for being here for us, for working so patiently, trying to help navigate through the tough times that we're going through, trying to figure out what we need to do. I can tell you that I am working diligently in Tallahassee as much as I can with the legislators and locally to see what we can get here. But of course, it's going to take a village. And the more people that we get to speak up, the better it will be. You know, I said something the other day about somebody who doesn't realize what it's like to be elected official. And I just saw somebody do this. And let me tell you something. Unless you are walking in my shoes or walk in our shoes, you have no idea what we deal with in our daily life or our daily day, how many phone calls or losing three students to suicide in less than forty-eight hours. That really impacted a lot of families, a lot of loved ones, a lot of people. And our superintendent reached out to the state and was able to get extra resources for us to get some extra mental health counselors for our crisis team. And I appreciate that. Amy in Asia, Amy Elwood in Asia. I know you're, Amy's here. You have a lot on your shoulders. And I'm going to try not to cry, but thank you. Our teachers are going through a lot. Any faculty's going through a lot. And we need to be there for each other. We need to lift each other up. And Ally's Hope, which is one of the boards I serve on, I'm a huge advocate for mental health, biting tooth and nail to get extra mental health resources for our schools. Listening to those students that spoke, I believe the school board members left before they spoke, but those students were phenomenal, sharing their stories of being bullied. And I'm not turning a blind eye away from it because we do know what happens. These devices, these computers, technology in general, it's extremely critical that we work and navigate through this together. We can't do this on our own. Our employees can't do this on their own. We have to have a whole community working together, families, everybody. Know what your children are using. Check out what they're on, even when they're in the classroom. It's critical. Please, reach out to the mobile crisis hotline numbers. This is for us as well, for adults. There's somebody for us all the time. The 988 Suicide Hotline. Don't be afraid to talk and use that word, suicide, because it's critical that we address these topics with our children to make sure that they know that we're there to support them, but not just them, our adults too. And some tough times going around right now. And the other day, we, I was at an event, and every single, actually, it was day two. How many of you have felt under pressure? Every hand went up. How many of you felt that, you know, you weren't supported? Every hand went up. And we have to wrap our hands around each and every one of us to make sure that we protect each other, that we're there for each other, and that we're not alone. And Christina Watkins, who was our emcee for Ally's Hope and was also an emcee for another event this week, huge mental health advocate as well as me, she said something, and I want anybody that's listening to this and anybody in the audience to say this too, right after me. Repeat right after me. You matter.
Matter.
You are seen.
You are seen.
It's okay not to be okay.
It's okay to not be okay.
And you're not alone.
You're not alone.
And we can do this together.
We do this together.
Thank you, guys. And please know that because each and every one of you are precious. And we may not all agree on each topic, but we should respect each other. We need to lead by example. Everybody says, well, Abby, you get along with everybody. Yes, I do. I may not see eye to eye with everybody, but it's important to get along with everybody. It's important to listen to everybody, to hear everybody's opinions because that's our job. That is my job. You are our constituents. You are our bosses. You are in charge of us. And if I don't listen to what you have to say, I may not agree with everything, but I need to listen to you, and so do we all. So it's extremely critical. And I just want you to know how important each and every one of you are to us. I stand proud with public education. I will constantly stand up for our schools and fight until the bitter end, as it's never going to end. And like Dr. Griffin said today at the Youth Summit, and they talked about the Why Not book, you matter and your voice matters. We are better together, and we learn from each other. Never give up and be resilient. Remember the 988 Suicide Crisis Hotline. Have a safe holiday. Thank you for all you do. And remember, the most important person is you. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
Thank you. The past several weeks have been a time of great triumph. We've had amazing celebrations in our arts and our athletics and our academics. And as Member Sanchez and my colleagues have said, we also have had tremendous, tremendous challenges. And it's, it sounds like a cliche when we talk about SEPS as being a family. Until you're in it, it, it just seems like something trite and a feel-good moment. But family is when someone's sick and you fill in for them. We've got Dr. Walt Griffin, who jumps right back in, though retired, to step in and help stand by our side. We've got Mike Godro, again, stepping in when needed. That's what family does. And that's what we need to do for one another. I would like to say thank you especially to Ms. Elwood and her Student Support Services, to everyone on her team, to the school counselors that were there, not just during school, but they came to the memorial services. They came to funerals. They made sure they dug through our website and made sure that we had resources available for families and for students. And I'd like to say thank you to PTA. They are our Parent Teacher Association and the PTA of Seminole County. They, they heard the call, and so they launched an event, and they invited NAMI and Ally's Hope and Central Florida Indian Community, lots and lots of community resources about mental health. And they had a phenomenal panel to discuss difficult topics. What do we, how do we address mental health? How do we talk about wellness? How do we have deep, meaningful discussions with students, with peers? And it was incredibly valuable, and I am grateful that, that they are their part, they are our partners because we need public education, and SEPS needs all of the partners and champions that we can find. We are built on deep connections and genuine relationships. And I'd like to share just a couple of examples of this. Over and over again, we have heard throughout the last few weeks, share your story, tell your story. It's important that people know your story. So I'm going to share a couple of brief stories. Academics. Dr. Dellinger and I had the opportunity to go to the Farm Bureau's Association, the Seminole County Farm Bureau's Association, where they announced their Educator of the Year, and we saw her tonight, Ms. Sherry Brinkman. But they also, they also recognized a student, Moitri Sandra, who is at Oviedo High School. She's in the Roots to Research Program. And she has two patents. She's a young scientist. They are calling her because they're using her research, a microneedle patch sensor to detect oxytetracycline and citrus root tissues. This is a high school student. In our high schools, these kinds of stories are alive in our classrooms throughout the district. You just have to look for them. We are, and it's because of our phenomenal educators giving our kids the opportunity. I'm going to speak quickly about also that the Ferioses were there. They are science teachers in Oviedo. They lead our science fair year after year after year, do tremendous work. They need sponsors. So if you are a business and you would like to sponsor an event, let me pull it up real quick, in animal sciences, perfect. Anybody knows anybody that works at the zoo? We would love a sponsor. Behavioral and social sciences, sounds great for us, our psychologists, mental health people. Chemistry, mathematics. Special exhibitions for arts and humanities. So even if you don't consider yourself a science artist, we have a place for you too. So that's a story about our academics. Athletics. We just, in this book, we're going to get the opportunity to name the Seminole High Dance Room after a forty-plus-year educator, Maureen McGuire. She has been leading the Dazzlers, tremendous athletes. If you have ever seen them move, they are a force. And, and our girls volleyball at Oviedo, state champions. So, you know, so many great stories. And last but not least, the arts. I've had the opportunity to go to, oh my gosh, theater competitions. We've had thespians, we've had performances, and lots and lots of band, band presentations from our marching bands to our football games. So I just want to share one last story to leave you with about the power of community in Seminole County Public Schools. So nine years ago, there was a student named Jacob. And he played the trombone and the tuba, and he joined the Pride of the Tribe, which is the Seminole High School marching band. And because Jacob joined, his dad became a band booster. And if ever any of you have been affiliated with band or theater or anything else, you know those boosters are the heart of the organization. They keep it going. So anyway, Ray chugs along. He goes to, you know, he goes to games. He, you know, endures weather delays, you know, lost shakos. His daughter starts band, or his son joins band a few years later, Ethan. He plays the trumpet. And then just two years ago, his daughter Kalen joins band. And they're going to festivals, and she's in color guard. And they're talking to all the other band parents at the concession stand. And there are so many lost socks and laughs and tears. And they meet, the dad, Ray, meets another dad, the dad of a flute player, Dennis. And he finds out that Dennis needs a kidney. And so Ray goes to see if he's a match. And he is. And these two dads, these two band boosters, they are now linked intrinsically because Ray donated his kidney to Dennis. And that is what we mean as the heart of SEPS. Those are deep, meaningful connections and enduring relationships.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And how am I supposed to follow that? I will tell you, we have pages and pages of events that we all attended. It has, the month of November has flown by. Just two brief highlights that I'd like to share. I too attended Veterans Day Celebration at Eastbrook Elementary. The Lake Howell High School Color Guard was there. They recognized grandparents and parents. They got a special breakfast with their students. And then we, we recognized and honored them. That was very meaningful. And in addition, we all attended the State of Sanford Luncheon, the Crime Line Awards Breakfast. I was lucky enough to go to the Lake Howell High School Hall of Fame Dinner that they recognize many of their athletes. One had been deployed, a young girl had been deployed on the coast of Venezuela, and it was just by happenstance, she was home and could receive a double award. So you do not want to invite us bowling. We went to the Unity Youth Association Bowling Tournament. And then finally, I was invited by the Supervisor of Election to attend Hagerty High School. We did a student voter registration, and there was a ballot initiative question. And all but one class voted for more homework, because they didn't understand. And so Supervisor Pennick shared how you really need to research what's on the ballot to these students. So we registered and preregistered. Most of them were not 18 yet, but they are, they are registered. And in honor of the upcoming Holiday and American Education Week, if I could take privilege and share a poem to my teachers and staff. May your heart always be filled with the joy of knowing how deeply you've impacted lives. May your days be as inspiring as the lessons you've shared, and may the kindness you've sown in the minds and hearts of your students return to you a hundredfold. May your spirit never tire, your wisdom never fade, and your compassion always shine brightly. You are not just a teacher, you are a builder of dreams, a nurturer of potential, and a blessing to every life you've touched. Happy American Education Week, and thank you. And that concludes my comments. I'm sorry. Oh, thank you. Well, there is a RFP, thank you for pointing that out, item on the book, if someone could, is interested in serving, item VI six Q, RFP for Enterprise Research Planning ERP. And I understand, Dr. Dellinger?
I would like to do that, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Now Superintendent, do you have a recommendation on the consent agenda?
Yes, that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Is there a motion to approve, School Board?
They're moved.
Second. Vice Chair, you got it? Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any post? Motion passes. And the other item that was on the consent that we removed, it does not need any other attention?
The board voted.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Student Discipline Hearing. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation regarding the student discipline hearings?
Yes, that the School Board of Seminole County approve the student disciplinary recommendations from September 29, 2025, October 6, 2025, October 13, 2025, October 20, 2025, and November 3, 2025.
Thank you. Board members, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Member Davis, and second by, was that you, Dr. Dellinger? Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any post? Thank you. We have no unfinished business, new business. Superintendent, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. Most of the report is read-only and is included in the book, but I'd ask Captain Shaw to come to provide the Quarter One School Safety Report.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Chair Kraus, Board Member Superintendent Beeman. Quarterly, the Department of Education Office of Safe Schools provides its fiscal report. They just moved, sorry. Fiscal report as required by Florida Statute 106.07. The school safety specialists must provide the superintendent and school board at least quarterly any noncompliance by the school district with laws or rules regarding school safety. During Quarter One, two schools were inspected by the Department of Education. There were minimal issues found. All deficiencies were easily resolved and corrected in a timely manner that day. So I'll have the report, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for meeting with each of us individually, too. Thank you. So read-only. Okay, we're now up to Board Comments, Committee Updates, Committee Reports. Dr. Dellinger?
Yes, the Audit Committee met on October 17, and the committee determined at that time to pursue the opportunity to continue to work with RSM for '26, '27. And so we'll address that at our next meeting.
Thank you very much.
The Central Florida Public School Board Coalition Meeting was canceled, but we'll meet when we're at the FSBA Conference. And last week, I attended the Council of Local Governments, the Seminole County Meeting, and their board approved our voting membership.
Thank you.
So I'll attend the future meetings as the board representative, and I think Ms. Garrick is the alternate for that. So it's a very informative meeting, and I learned quite a bit about our cities. I mean, it really was very interesting, and the collaboration, I think, will be really helpful for us moving forward, because it's not just the cities, but the county, Seminole State, and the airport. So there's a lot of opportunity for working together with them.
Thank you, and thank you for serving. Member Davis, do you have any committee reports?
I just want to add, the Children's Alliance meets again December 17. Like the Children's Alliance, the Children's Cabinet in Seminole County is also part of the Children's Alliance. This is where a lot of the organizations, such as the Department of Children and Families, the Guardian Program for Guardian Adl items for students, Department of Juvenile Justice, they all come together. And I know we've been talking a lot about celebrating and awards and celebrations, but some of our kids are still not doing very well. And these organizations are too, that will get together and share resources, will discuss children who are in need, families who are in need, and they will work out who can help the best and the most, and who can supplement that. So it's really good for the students, you know, who are struggling, because there are places out there that will help. I had to learn a very long time ago that you have to ask for help. And I was one that would never do that, just wouldn't ask. But every once in a while, you have to, you have to ask, because nobody knows what's going on inside of you.
That's right.
Thank you again. I didn't mean for this to turn into, you know, this big story thing. I do appreciate all of you, though, and I'm glad you're here, and I'm glad you're willing to share your thoughts with us. So we just want to share a little bit of how we feel, too. But thank you.
Thank you, Member Davis. Member Sanchez?
So this week is the opening of the Asian Lantern Festival for our Central Florida Zoo and Botanical Gardens. Thank you, Member Dellinger and Chair Kraus, for joining me on Legislative Days and learning a little bit about the zoo and getting to see everything in the inside operations at night. It is an absolutely phenomenal exhibit. It goes until January 18. It does sell out, and if you want tickets, you need to get them immediately, or you won't get your date that you want, especially during the holidays when schools are out, especially like Thanksgiving Week and during Christmas and Hanukkah and Kwanzaa, all that. Those dates are always sold out. So look through and go on that site. They also have summer camp, summer camps, fall camps. Grow, the Superintendent and I went to Ryder Park for the 10-year anniversary for Grow, which is our recess balls equipment that we stock up and give. Colleen Gonzalez had started years ago, along with Ashley Dykes, who is one of our parents. We distribute balls, tennis balls, soccer balls, you name it, all kinds for children. So they have recess equipment to be outside, because you know it's against the law to hold any children in during recess time. That means no speech, language therapy, ESOL, any kind of training, they must be outside enjoying fresh air, running around like any other child. And that was something that back in the day, Angie Gallo, me, and Amy Lockhart put in place and worked diligently to make sure that was a law. And it's critical that we continue that. Please make sure you get your children outside. But the zoo has plenty of different camps through even Thanksgiving Week, being that it's a full week off. When we were at Grow's 10-year celebration, Orlando Magic is partnering with Abbott Health, and they are doing two camps. And I believe both camps were like $150 each, and they also have scholarships, too. So if you're not able to pay the full amount, they will be willing to work with you. The Health Department had a bunch of flyers, too, there that they shared some other camps that are available. So go online and check it out, especially for young ones that are home by themselves, because really, they shouldn't be. And the other thing is, we want to make sure that they're not on any sites with the internet and things like that that are not acceptable. And I really, truly want everybody to take time and have a no-cell phone zone in your home. My old principal, Mike Townsley, used to always say, the most important time of the day is your dinnertime, and that means no phones out, and it should be open and in conversations. And I think that we all need to keep that in mind, making sure that that is extremely important. Also, human trafficking. Please look up on that information. A bunch of ladies and I went to a human trafficking event a few weeks ago, and it's critical that our children are not exploiting themselves online. They're sharing their locations, their phones have their locations on it, pictures, they don't realize what they're doing. And yes, we have courses here and there, but it doesn't cover everything. So it's really important that we have that partnership to make sure that they have internet safety. And also remember that we have 24/7 Speak Out Hotlines. When you feel something's not right with someone, there will be somebody that can come out to your house. You can go to the Speak Out Hotline, 1-800-SPEAKOUT-HOTLINE, the 211. There are so many different services that Seminole County has. The 1-800-423-TIPS, which is a Speak Out Hotline, the Mobile Crisis Service, which is 211, Florida Child Abuse Hotline. There's a ton of different ones. And you see something, say something, just like anybody else. Also had the opportunity to speak with the NEST students, students, teachers, and talked a little bit about self-care, telling our new teachers that if you don't take care of yourself and put yourself first, you can't help others. And that goes for everyone in this room, too. We have to take care of ourselves, and I'm guilty of it myself. Here I am preaching to the choir, but we have to take care of ourselves first before we can take care of others. And I also want to do a big shout-out to Seminole Cultural Arts Council, one of the boards I serve on, a couple art boards that I serve on, trying to make sure we get STEM back and not just STEM, because the arts, we have over a third of our schools, or a third of our population that are in the arts. And I want to make sure that we don't ever leave them out. And they did a, Sandra Rivas was our lead in the Student Art Showcase. Dr. Mullins and Mike Alba came there, as well as, I believe my board members were there, too. So thank you for being there. And looking at the beautiful artwork that our students exhibited and being there for that was, meant a lot to everybody. And I wanted just to leave you on one thing that Dr. Griffin said, and today, you know, listen to our students, listen to them, something he started many, many years ago. They can advocate for themselves, and we want to share what, how they feel in the community, and never underestimate their voice. We need them to speak up. And that really resonated with me today, because many years ago, he put that student forums in place where not just the student government kids, but we would go out to the schools, and this was before COVID, and meet with a variety of different students and after school hours, and let them talk about what their concerns were. And that is a huge piece, but that also goes for our families listening to their kids as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair.
So I serve on the Foundation Board, and Member Davis talked about the biggest highlight, which was our Night of Impact, which was fabulous. I will make sure that those minutes from the most recent board meeting get sent, and you all can read them. I did want to let you know that the Foundation is a strong supporter of our families in need, and so I had the opportunity to attend with Gene Van Smith, the Director of the Foundation Hope Helps, which was an Oviedo panel. So they had a nonprofit partnership panel, and Julian Orleman from the, from Ms. Elwood's team was there to represent us. She is, leads up FIN, and she did a beautiful job. And this was several weeks ago, so there was a, there was a huge concern about SNAP benefits, which at the time were paused. And so it was really heartwarming to see the collaboration between the variety of nonprofits throughout the area. So we've got the Sharing Center, Christian Helps, of course, FIN, and there were, there were two more. And there's just seamless communication, making sure that we give families the support they need. And the reality is also, we have employees that also need these services and this help. The need out there is just great. So I, that was, that was Foundation, Midway Coalition. The 5K has been rescheduled, there's some roadwork, and so the 5K can't happen this November, so it's been rescheduled to January. I'll share details when they come out. The Sanford Commission, Commission Two Meeting at the Velma Williams Center. We had firefighters there, the city spoke. One of the things that was, was confirmed was that the, all of the police, both sheriff and all of the other municipalities, all of them have gun locks. And so last night, Unity Youth Association led a Wellness Mental Health Panel, but they also talked about the importance of making sure that medicines are secured, expired medicines are appropriately disposed of, which you can, don't, don't put them down your toilet, don't throw them in the garbage, take them to the, to the police station anytime you want, and you can drop them in, and that way they stay out of the hands of anyone that might be curious. And also, they have gun locks that are completely free. When purchasing a new weapon from a dealer, it comes with a lock. However, if you have an older weapon, the police are happy to come to you. They said, please do not bring the weapon to the police department and ask for help putting it on, but they are happy to come to you, bring locks to you at any time. So I encourage you, if you have weapons near your house, to please be sure and store them safely. And if you're unsure, please call the, please call the local law enforcement officers and talk, and talk through with them the appropriate way to store firearms. Thank you very much to the board. I am a graduate of Leadership Seminole Class of 34, which happened last May. However, we are finally going to have our ribbon cutting for our project, which is renovation of Christian Helps, and that'll be this Friday. So if anyone is up to joining me for ribbon cutting, I am pleased to be there and represent Leadership Seminole Class of 34. And that's all I've got. Oh, real quick, sorry. One last thing. Dr. Guard Harold and I also are on the panel of the United Way Uplifted Group. And so we had our meeting, and I can share those minutes with you as well, often via email.
And if you can let us know about the ribbon cutting Friday.
I will.
I'd appreciate it very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you. My committee updates, I updated on mayors and managers' last meeting. We had our Strategic Plan Steering Committee meeting. We will be sending surveys to families, probably December, January, be on the lookout where it can, you know, the superintendent's evaluating timeframes. So we'll announce that, because we want your input into the strategic plan. The Orlando Science Center Board meets next Monday. However, our middle school students were treated to an evening of science fun, and they had an evening field trip to the Science Center. I forgot to report on that, which was, that was a lot of fun. And that concludes my committee reports. Thank you very much. It's now time for public comments, non-agenda items. Each speaker will have two minutes. Connor Monroe, followed by James Evans. If you can meet us up at the dais, please. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Chair. My name is Connor Monroe. I'm a teacher at Lake Brantley High School. I proudly serve as our SCA rep, and I'm also proud to be a public school teacher. And I'm also proud to be a public school teacher here in Seminole County. I love that we take care of the whole community, not just those that have resources or access to financial benefit. I also love that we have a union contract that allows me and my coworkers to have dignity in the workplace, where our planned time is protected, our work hours are protected. And I think that we have something special in Seminole County with our public schools, and we ought to protect it. We all see what's happening in Orange County next door with the encroachment of charter schools, and I don't think we're immune. So to that end, one thing I think we can do to ensure that we have our public schools protected is to make sure that our facilities are world-class. Facilities where our students feel comfortable and where the conditions are conducive to learning. An important issue that my teachers are dealing with, and teachers across the county I know they're dealing with, is the issue of air conditioning in our classrooms. It's constantly breaking down, multiple times a week. Many work orders are being placed across the district. You know, teachers, we say that we put blood, sweat, and tears into our classrooms, but that's supposed to be figurative, right? So what I'm, what I'm asking for is for members of the Board to investigate the issue and work with SCA to try and find a permanent solution. I believe our administrators are doing the best they can, but we need the Board to get involved and help us out. Thank you.
Connor, may I ask what school?
Lake Brantley High School.
Lake Brantley, thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Evans, followed by Thomas Bugos. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Kraus. So really quick, American Education Week, so. It was really, really cool to be actually at Casper Elementary as part of the teach-in, and I got a lot of text messages from new parents who have just started teaching for the first time and loved it. So let's keep doing that every year. But I really wanted to bring up Winter Springs Elementary, and in particularly the school zone. I sent an email months ago to Chief Francis, and Lieutenant Seiple helped me out. I also know the City of Winter Springs is also pushing through their commission, but it seems FDOT has sort of thrown up a barricade to say there won't be any school zone in front of Winter Springs Elementary, because it's a lighted intersection. And I'm still hearing from members of the community that that's not really acceptable, simply because there are still children on the sidewalks at Chioa and 434. And when I read the statute for what dictates a school zone, it wasn't really, in my understanding as a non-lawyer, it was not really the purview of FDOT if the municipality or the district really moved for that engagement. And while I certainly see their argument, there are still other arguments to be made, particularly increased signage for children, just because there is a blinking school zone. If the light does happen to be green, the school, the speed limit is still 35, but historically, for decades, it has been 45 over there, and many people still do 45, if not more. And so having a green light at Winter Springs Elementary still does not avoid any careless drivers from, you know, misnegotiating a curve, if you will. So I would really love our Board to look further into this. You know, Superintendent Beeman. Community in Winter Springs, as a resident, people are still curious why there's no school zone in front of Winter Springs Elementary when there are in every other elementary school and middle school within the, in the city. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thomas Bugos, followed by, well, Mr. Westington left, I believe, followed by Nina Sandberg. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening. Good. Good evening, members of the Board. I am Thomas Joe Bugos II. Tonight, I want to speak to you, or take some time to honor those who serve the district employees of our public school system and to recognize the respect they deserve. As we celebrate American Education Week, we honor those who have made their life choice to serve the public through the commitment to our schools, whether by delivering the curriculum and standards set by the state or by supporting the daily operations that keep our schools running. Every individual has chosen to serve the citizens of Seminole County and the children who attend our public schools. But honoring educators also means listening to their voices. Tonight, I want to share the perspective of two employees who could not be here in person. They are a married couple, both time, both full-time teachers, who have dedicated more than two decades combined in serving students. Like many educators, they challenge, they have challenges outside of the classroom, which made it impossible for them to make it here this evening. Their story is not unique. It reflects the reality of many of our educators and support staff. And here it is in their own words. My husband is a second-grade teacher who has taught in this district for over 12 years. He pays almost $400 a month on insurance for him and the two children. Currently, I am a teacher in the district for 10 years, now a kindergarten teacher, and I have the buy-up plan because of frequent medical needs. I pay $495 per paycheck. Together, our family of four pays roughly $490 every month for premiums alone. And this is just the premiums. This month, I paid over $200 for a doctor's visit, plus I'm paying a $500 ER bill. And we can only manage to make payments because the raises and the healthcare costs keep rising. My husband is only bringing home $240 more per paycheck from when he started in 2013, and that includes the income from his after-school job he does for the county. We are two full-time teachers in this district, two people dedicating our lives and serving students, and we are being crushed by healthcare costs and forced to make up lost income. I have submitted this for your record. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bugos. Nina Sandberg, followed by Raquel Molina. Good evening, Nina.
I'm Nina Sandberg. The employee who you just suspended did way, way less than the employee who was my son's main abuser. My son's abuser was promoted after Walt Griffin was supposed to fire him. I just watched the woke crowd suspend a minority person without pay who has problems expressing himself in the English language before you did any actual research into his situation. The non-woke crowd is disgusted with how you treated this man. We are watching you retaliate against a low-wage worker who was trying to tell you that you have yet another building in SEPS that is a sick building with mold. Instead of doing research to figure out exactly what is going on, you instantly retaliated against this man just because the Superintendent recommended it. We need much more information to make any kind of proper assessment of that situation. You shouldn't have voted on anything tonight regarding that man. I have in my own possession at home a retaliation letter that was written by Superintendent Beeman while she was a school board lawyer to retaliate against me specifically for reporting that my son was being abused at school. The purpose of that letter was to intimidate me, to try to stop me from continuing to report the abuse that was being done to my child at school. I just watched you basically retaliate against an employee for reporting that there's mold in the buildings. And we all remember what happened at Evans Elementary School. You had all kinds of employees coming to tell you that you have mold in the buildings, and people were getting sick. Anyway, I see that this school system is extremely corrupt. There's all kinds of corruption that goes on. One school board member told me outright she didn't get my emails when my child was being abused, so someone plays with the email system, too. And there's all kinds of really bad stuff that goes on. You should not have suspended that man.
Thank you, Nina. Raquel Molina? Good evening.
Good evening. Wow, not a good evening. I am Raquel Molina. Just a brief message to extend my condolences to the family and friends who are mourning the loss of three SEPS high school students. Wow, three suicides in one week. Heartbreaking. I also want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. This holiday is a reminder to pause and reflect on things we are grateful for, and that no matter our struggles, there's always something to be thankful for. My family will always be thankful for all the ethical caring employees in SEPS, especially the two excellent role models, Ms. Phelps and Ms. Alabush in the Special Education Department at Winter Springs High School. Their professionalism and genuine care for all their students have made a world difference. These two teachers are always safeguarding their students, and ensuring accountability will always remain their top priority. Thanks to Principal Mr. Gaffney and a few others, my daughter Emily got her high school diploma approximately four years ago. Her diploma is not just a piece of paper, but it is a symbol of the countless hours they all invested in Emily, and for never giving up on her when she needed to support the both. Fake, pre-appropriate public education was denied to her by those in power. But she got compassion and respect by Ms. Phelps and Ms. Alabush and Mr. Gaffney, thank God. We meet many good teachers throughout the school years, but only a few leave a lasting impression. I will always be so grateful for the ethical employees in SEPS, but for the unethical leadership, thank you for waking me up, because I totally, totally lost trust in you all. Happy holidays.
Thank you so much. That concludes our Public Comment Non-Agenda Items. Board members, if you have nothing else? Superintendent?
I do. I wanted to say to a number of folks, a thank you. Starting with, thank you to Grace Gonzalez, who, along with her team, organized the wonderful Employee of the Year event. And say congratulations to our District Employee of the Year, Ms. Carol Moore. Also want to say congratulations to Member Sanchez. She is the Recovery House Volunteer of the Year, and very, very deserving. And I know that happened earlier this week. We haven't had a chance to kind of celebrate you, but well-deserved. Would also like to wish all of you and all of our staff, of our teachers, every employee, a really restful week next week. We are very thankful for you, for all that you do, for every student in this district. I hope you enjoy a really happy Thanksgiving. And with that...